Thank you all for being here today. The purpose of this meeting is for site-based councils to report to us as required by law. So I believe first on our agenda is Simon Kenton High School, Martha Sivers. Welcome Martha.
Thank you.
And Mr. Potten?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, I will begin with our points of pride for Simon Kenton. As you know, the assessment system has changed significantly and we have a lot more assessments for the students and more checkpoints along the way. And I am happy to report that our plan and ACT scores have increased, both of them, over the last three years. So we feel like the structures and instruction that we have put in place is helping increase those scores. And we know we have more work to do. They are not where we want to be. We do feel like that we are, our students are much more competitive in the state and the nation than we have shown up to this point. So we, as you'll hear, we're putting measures in place for that. We are very proud of our science scores. They were the highest in the district and 24th in the state. And they are doing several things in that department that other departments are beginning to model and I will share those as well. And then another point of pride was 76% of our students in the 10th grade benchmark in English. So we can see that we're making good strides with that as well. And you can see our plan scores went from a 17.4 to a 17.8. And the ACT scores went from a 19.2 to a 19.8 last year. And we felt like there were several reasons why. Nothing happens by chance. So we did have our staff complete plan and ACT prep sessions for students after school if they felt like they needed additional help before each test. And of course, teachers began working on the skills in class much more than they had in the past last year. We did redesign all of our curriculum maps and our common assessments all around the quality core that the end-of-course exams would be following. And we did, we did begin some intervention programs for students that didn't meet benchmark in math or had low map scores. We started a math intervention program called Alex. That's an acronym. And then we still have Read 180 in System 44 for those students that are below benchmark in math, or in reading, I'm sorry. And for those students who are seniors that did not meet benchmark on the ACT, they could take the Compass and Coyote after remediation and demonstrate that they were at benchmark as well. That was all last year. While we were doing all of those things to try to improve our instruction, we visited several schools and as part of our next generation committee, we developed a program called SCORE, which is Simon Kenton Opportunity to Reach Excellence. And in our SCORE program, it is a wide range of interventions, but it's not just interventions for students who don't meet benchmark. We also have students that are in accelerated and AP classes, opportunities for enrichment for them. So we have basically 25 minutes each day during the school day so students don't have to stay after school for the extra help they need. So if they are below where they need to be in reading and math, they would have either Read 180 or Alex. We also put in a reading intervention program for upperclassmen if they did not meet the English and reading benchmark on the plan for the juniors. And we call it Read 360, where they are working on the skills required on the ACT in order to be college and career ready. We also have enrichment, one day, one session per week for AP students. The AP teachers pull them out and they get extra time for the accelerated classes as well. And basically, if you don't need an intervention and you don't need, and you're not in the enrichment group, then you would have opportunity to have a study hall. And that's something, we surveyed students and teachers several times and that's something students felt like they needed in order to do their best. In addition, we have mandatory tutoring. So if you're failing two or more classes, you're required to go to tutoring in a two-week session. If you're not passing, you don't get out. If you do begin to pass, then after the two weeks of mandatory tutoring, you would get out. In addition, this year, we developed a new math class for freshmen called Foundations of Math Design to try to make sure they have the foundation they need before progressing on to Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry and taking the end-of-course exams, but also to get the skills they need for the plan and the ACT. We have an additional opportunity for students to reach benchmark by taking the Compass and Coyote. We also are working on college and career readiness in several ways, not just college-ready with the plan and ACT, but career-ready. So we are working to develop programs where the students can take the assessments at the end and become career-ready, not just college-ready. So we're working on that in our business department. When we did our test for analysis to decide what we needed to keep as far as our instructional practices in the curriculum and what we needed to refine and we're going to try to get better, we developed a matrix from, for the four core areas, English, math, science, and social studies. Those all have an end-of-course exam or a part to play in the plan, the ACT. They may have writing. And so what we did was developed this so we could see the progression of a student when they entered our doors as a freshman, what assessments they would be required to take and what instruction would be needed for them to make sure that they could demonstrate that they had mastered the content and meet the benchmark at each grade level. We also included which teachers were responsible for what so that they, the teachers also had an understanding of this is my role for meeting the students' need. So we developed that in grades nine through 12 for the four core areas in order to ensure that the students were getting the instruction that they needed to build the skills for the assessments.
Is the math class that you developed for freshmen, is that a four-credit class?
It is for credit, yes. Students are required to take four years of math now, so this is one of their four.
This has took a lot of planning. Your teachers have all been, and this is every teacher participating.
In the, in these four core areas.
And Martha, when I was there for my school visits, at least one person from every department was so proud of that they brought it to share with me. I think that was good stuff. Did you say they own it?
It helped us, I think, or it helped me and I'll let John speak as well. I needed to see the whole picture, you know? And I felt like they did too because, you know, we would have team meetings for the, for freshmen, then we'd have another one for the sophomores, then we'd have another one for the juniors. And we have PLC groups where they are looking at the student work and providing feedback and deciding as a group what to do with the instruction. But at times, they might miss. If I'm teaching the juniors now, what were the freshmen doing? So it really helped us all to see the path and the progression that each student would take and the responsibility.
There's also been some talk across departments as well. Now that this is all in place, they've kind of shared some things. So I've heard some English and history teachers that have, well, if you're doing that and we're doing this, why don't we get together and work together? So, you know, having it all laid out and so that it could be seen has been helpful, I think, not only within the department, but across those departments as well.
Awesome, awesome. Very targeted.
Yes.
And what's your population today?
It's around 1660, 1670, give or take. So we're still growing. Still growing.
Unbelievable, unbelievable. Anybody got anything else? Well, we appreciate it and I appreciate all your detailed work here. I've already looked over it. I've enjoyed looking at it very much. Thanks for coming. And I guess we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, thank you for your support.
So we have from Scott High School, Dr. Brenna Sat and Mr. John Rolch. Shane, Shane Rolch. Sorry. Welcome, fellas. Welcome. Glad to have you. Go ahead, start us where you want to start.
Thank you guys for having us here today. We're very excited to be here. We've had a great year. We're to start with our point of pride. And I wanted to start with talking about our math growth, I'm sorry, math growth. As we looked at our ACT scores and through our data from this year, one of the things that has really stuck out is how much our students grow in math with us from the plan to ACT, which is what the growth index is figured on for our new scores. We had a 67.7, which was highest in this district. Also, it was 10 states above state average, 10 points above state average. When we look back at this, by looking at this year's, I'm sorry, last year's juniors were supposed to, according to the plan, only be at 25% on benchmark. Through the work of our math department, they were able to get 31% of those students benchmark or above, which is a huge increase for math. The year before, the students were only projected for 30% to be on benchmark in math and our math work with them moved them to 50% at benchmark. Yeah, and that's actually a trend that's went for three years that our math department overperforms what our students are supposed to be doing in math. Our reading score, we had some significant growth in reading. It was a 59.6, which is slightly above the state average. But the other thing that made it even more significant for us is when you look around the state and you look at averages, rarely does your math performance outperform your reading performance. And in ours and the state, the reading growth is a couple of points above the math growth. For ours to be significantly above, it says something really important about our math Speaking of last year, and some of this started earlier than that, but it takes a couple of years for some movements to actually affect it. But what we feel most affected the growth in math was a couple of things. Introduction to Springboard had a huge effect on our math department and our math teachers and the way they taught, the introduction of the new core and the lineup with that. Our teachers really embraced it, our math teachers. Our English teachers did as well, but the math was facilitated and set up to really take it and run with it. Additionally, the MDC work that Jenny Barrett does with our teachers, we have two teachers actually have trained nationally through the Gates Organization and side-by-side with Jenny. One of them Laura Colchuk Cole, she's actually touted as one of the premier professionals in the country on using those strategies and she's actually leading that department this year. So that's, that's what we feel has done most of that increase for us in those areas. And it really does look a different, the pinnacle of probably that piece was when the CEO of the Gates Organization came in business last year. Our reading growth, which we expect to be even larger this year because we've made some major strides this past year in the reading area and the English areas and LDC in general, thanks to Gary McCormick and the hard work of our teachers that are involved in the LDC. Shannon Henson, also Michelle Brooker, those teachers were some of the main draws for why the Gates Organization actually came and saw us there. Those things have really driven our English department and our math department. I think that at the end of this year, you're going to see the kind of growth in English that we had in math the last couple of years. I really expect that. Our math scores are showing that already through the Renaissance Academy, also through the classes. And we've, we've just started in the second cycle, which tracks that. But our kids are getting our scores back and our teachers are tracking them with the kids. They are showing significant growth. In the Renaissance Academy, their growth is already a couple of points for just one half a year. Their growth on reading is two to three points higher than average and they've only had them for, you know, a half a year. So we're very impressed and happy about that. This past fall, we did start several things that we had initiated last year, but we're still concentrating on. Walk-throughs and evaluations have majorly changed for us. We are spending a lot of time in classrooms, a lot of time working with teachers one-on-one, and a lot of time getting teachers working with each other. We average, each of the principals average five to 10 classrooms a day. We actually tracked that last year. We were in almost 3,000 classrooms. And we're not in there picking on teachers or doing things mean or awful. We're in there watching instruction, having conversations with teachers, and coaching them up to the next phase. And I think you're going to see some huge payoff from that. Just this year, they've started to coach each other and share a lot of things. That modeling, that procedure is really moving us forward. We are starting to utilize our math scores. We have done some training. We are trying to teach all of our teachers about kids' issues with reading, kids' problems with, you know, numeracy, and then actually using that to change instruction, adjust what they do in the classroom. And we've seen the first indications that our teachers are taking that on without being forced, without being required. They're actually asking the questions, getting involved. We've done a lot of work with that and we'll continue to do that. We still do ACT and Compass and Coyote, but we really feel that for us, pass the test, we were trying to get things in the classroom set the best suit our kids and the best attack the kids where they're at. The other thing that we have worked tremendously on and probably what I am the most proud of at this point is school culture. We feel our school culture is one of the major influences on us in that it has been holding us back from making some of the changes that we are making now and are making a lot faster than expected. According to a January 2011 Gates-sponsored survey, we ranked really, really low in several areas: student relationships with teachers, school culture and attitudes, and rigor in the classroom. We actually were 10th percentile or less in those three categories on a national survey. And we have taken that to heart. We're giving that survey again this year in January and are looking forward to those results. A few questions that will haunt us to our grave and we talk about continuously is, for example, one of the questions on that survey was, how many of your teachers are not just satisfied if you pass, but really care if you learn? We were the lowest school in the study. How many teachers make connections between what you're learning in school and life? Lowest school in the study. The work I do in my class makes me really think. Lowest school in the study. And I point those out specifically because culture is really hard to look at and measure and get a handle on, but it is important, it is essential, and you can do a lot of stuff without it. As I said, we are giving that survey again this fall, I'm sorry, the spring. I'm very excited about it. We can't wait to see the results and I know some of you guys have been out to business. I wish you'd come out more because it has changed. It's a very positive place and it's a great place to be. We have transformed the way we interact with students. We seek out student perceptions at multiple times. We actually had a policy on it last year. The teachers have embraced it so well that they actually go above and beyond the policy now. The teacher collaboration has just skyrocketed. We actually have three or four departments that meet more than weekly and it's not mandatory, it's not required. They do it pretty much on their own. And then we, we actually take those surveys. We also have implemented this year a positive behavior support system and actually implemented it and done a lot of hard work with it. Our kids now actually get taught on a regular basis how to act, situations to act in, how to approach people when they're not doing well. Mr. Rogers actually runs that for us and gets that, writes those lessons for our teachers and then teachers share them and use them with the kids. And then our kids get rewards from going above and beyond the expectations that we give them. And some of our kids talk about that a lot. It's been a phenomenal step for us at the school. Since the data's been released, we have continued on with what we put in place. There's a couple of other things we have looked at since, but quite frankly, nothing in the data was a surprise for us. We got exactly what we expected. Overall score was 51.3, which is in the 32nd percentile. We are not satisfied with that. Not a single person on my staff is satisfied with that and we are really working hard and I know it will pay off. Our overall novice in math and reading from end-of-course exams was 46% in math and 31% in reading. Unacceptable. And we are not going to stay there and not going to let that happen again. Our gap score was 19.2, which is in the 8th percentile. That will not happen again and we have taken major measures to work on that. We are currently doing a lot of plan and ACT strategies, using that data to work with kids individually on their weaknesses. Additionally, we are piloting some RTI classes. What we're looking at is taking advantage of the trimester schedule and actually scheduling students into additional classes based on their need. And then once getting them in those classes, giving them instruction and individualized time to work on whatever their need is in math and/or reading. Later this afternoon, tonight in fact, my curriculum committee has written a proposal to add additional classes, additional English and math classes to our students who need it the worst, the ones that are significantly below benchmark. The committee passed that unanimously and it has been touted to the rest of the school. The rest of the school is in support of it. I have a little doubt that after tonight, we will probably have a policy that says, if you're significantly below benchmark, we are going to give you extra time in English and extra time in math so that you can be more successful for the rest of your high school career. At the same time, we are also in plans for putting together a by Z by Z period for next year. We're looking at probably one to two days a week where we would meet with kids individually, have teachers mentor kids. We're actually piloting that this year. Actually, Mr. Rogers is running that program as well, where we took volunteers. We had, I don't know how many teachers volunteered.
22.
22 teachers volunteered to take on kids out of their schedule to try to get them involved, get them active, you know, be mom and dad to them in a lot of ways. We've just started that and it seems to be going really well. Those RTI classes, it's not just extra time in the class. The RTI classes are going to be set up to make the kids successful. We're going to do algebra in a way that gets the kid ready to take the algebra class. As you see the growth in our math department, once they get a kid that's ready to go, they do phenomenal things with them. We've got to get them ready. Same thing with our English teachers. We're really looking at in English class, especially with reading, giving those kids extra time working on the things that map identifies and the thing plans identifies that says this is what they need growth in, this is what they need help in. And we are piloting those this year with a couple of classes. In conclusion, it is our goal that's got to become a proficient school. I expect that to happen this year. I suspect it has already happened, but we do not have data to support it yet. I am overwhelmed by my staff, the way they have taken on this challenge. Quite frankly, I have said to many people and I am honest when I say it, we are having discussions and making decisions and doing things for kids that I did not expect us to do for four to five years from now. This place is phenomenal and we will make you proud.
Thank you. Can I just, a little snapshot of the Renaissance Academy?
Absolutely.
All freshmen or?
It's freshmen and sophomores. They have a number of different things going on is the, they have their English and social studies class combined. So they take those together in a two-hour block and there are two teachers that teach them, I'm sorry, hour and 40-minute block because it's two periods. Those two teachers teach them together, a phenomenal pair. It's really funny because one of them is super structured and very organized, the other one is artsy and very flamboyant.
Great brain, left brain.
Yes, and they have taken on each other's personas and they actually cannot be separated now. They're so fluid together, it's a perfect model of co-teaching. We walk in there and hear part of the lesson every day and when you hear it, it's like they do things that we are trying to get every teacher to do. We actually have a lot of teachers that just go visit the Renaissance Academy just to see the strategies they're using. It was a little bit of an adjustment for some of the kids in there because they have embraced the right-brain type of learning, the project learning. You will walk in and, you know, the first week of school, they had four major projects they started. And the kids would say, what do these do? When you get them to proficiency, you know? And that was really a hard thing for them to figure out, but they've taken full command of it. Ms. Owens actually came out and visited one of their major projects with the making of a museum. They had a curator come out and help them actually form a museum, make the museum and probably a third of our school went through that during the day. I actually got chills through part of the museum from their presentation and their writing of it. I mean, it's been phenomenal. They have several other classes like that where they, their math and their science classes also formatted that way. And as I said, I mean, our early data from that shows us that kids are growing in there faster than average. The additional thing for us is we, it's full. It has, let's see, that would be, I want to say about 58 freshmen in there and about 54, 57 sophomores. And not a single kid has even had a conversation with us about not wanting to be in it. So that tells us they're happy and they're doing well.
And they're excellent. Will you talk about school culture there and, you know, focus on etiquette behavior? Is your discipline referrals down?
It's interesting. They started down about week 10 or 11. They skyrocketed. It was almost like the school started to have a little bit of a temper tantrum on us. And, you know, it's like they were doing what we asked and really doing well and then they decided like, you know, it's been too long, I can't take it anymore. And then we were just talking about this the last two days. The last two weeks at Scott have been as calm as we have ever known it to be. The kids are engaged, they're not even acting as if they shouldn't be. I mean, the last two weeks have been the best two weeks at Scott since I've been there.
Good, good. Hope the next two weeks go good.
We hope so. As you know, Christmas sometimes gets, you know, harder, but luckily for us this year, it hasn't been. It's been very positive.
And I appreciate your honesty there with the survey. I too look forward to the January survey.
Me too.
Very much. You make sure you report back to us.
I will, I will.
Anything else? That survey responded to our hate.
Yes, yes.
It's a very expensive survey, but we know I can get the best data from it. Awesome, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome Dixie Heights High School, Principal Ms. Karen Hendricks and Mr. Tom Spritzky.
Thank you.
Well, it's both your first time, I'm told.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yes.
We'll begin with our points of pride. The first thing you'll see at the top there is we're very proud of this, is that our school did score proficient. And while we're very, very proud of this rank, we are also, we have a goal for ourselves to be distinguished the next accountability cycle. We are also very proud that we were not labeled as a school of focus. And you'll see some of the reasons under there as why we were not considered a school of focus. We had a high graduation rate of 83%. We didn't have any individual group of students scoring significantly low. And we didn't have any non-duplicated gap group score in the bottom 10%. So we're also very proud of that. We're also very proud of our talented teaching staff and we're also proud that we had some publicly recognized teachers. First one is Chris Gillis and he was recognized as Ashland's Teacher Achievement Award. And with this recognition, he was nominated one out of 24 other teachers across the state as Teacher of the Year. We also have Jennifer Baldwin, who was awarded the Kentucky Art Education Association High School Education Art Teacher of the Year. And then we also had Rob Duddy, who was recognized as Kentucky Music Educators Association District 6 High School Music Teacher of the Year. So we're very proud of our staff. And last year, in our achievement, we had scores, we were 40% proficient distinguished in math. We had 56% proficient distinguished in reading. We attribute these scores to the Springboard curriculum, which we implemented last year. And we also began map testing last year and that was the first year that Dixie implemented the maps test. And our gap, our gap scores, we had 80% proficient for students of two or more races in reading. We also had 29% proficient and 13% distinguished, which is a total of 42% proficient distinguished in free and reduced lunch with our social studies. We did also have high numbers for students with IEPs scoring novice. We did attribute these scores, we did, we had a Read 180 in our System 44 programs and those did help our students with special needs. In our growth category, we had 60% of our students in reading and math who made tip marks. typical annual growth, and our plan results showed that we had seventy-two percent of students at or above benchmark in reading and forty-two percent of students at or above benchmark in math. And we attribute these scores. Last year, Dixie met with each individual sophomore student and reviewed their plan results with them. We talked very specifically with them. Here are the skills that, according to this score, shows that you are lacking, and here's some ways that you can work to improve in those skill areas. Our college and career readiness, we had an overall score of forty-nine. We had one hundred and seventy-one students who qualified as college-ready. We had eight students qualify as career-ready, and two of those students were career-ready in technical and one in academic, which gave us an overall career-ready score of one student. So this, we identified as an area of weakness for Dixie, and we are going to focus more on college readiness for these students. Our graduation rates, we had eighty-three percent of all students who graduated. We attributed this to Mr. Tibbs meeting monthly with the district, and we also began looking at the persistence to graduate data to help students who are at risk of dropping out to get some plans in place to help them be successful. This year, with, in the achievement scores, we have, I'm sorry, our goal is to increase our proficient and distinguished in reading and math from forty-eight point four to fifty-three point six. We have continued with the springboard curriculum, and our teachers are getting more comfortable with this, the new style of teaching that the springboard curriculum presents. We've also are now in year two of our map testing, and the teachers are learning how to differentiate in their classrooms using this data more. Last year, we spent a lot of time learning how to read the data and what we could do. This year, we're having more success with teachers implementing it. With our gap, we hope to increase our proficient and distinguished in reading and math from thirty-four point two to forty point eight. We also hope to increase our students with disability scores from six point six to fifteen point nine. We also hope to increase our students who are on free and reduced lunch scores from thirty-eight point one to forty-four point three. This year, we have added a math intervention group, and it is called our Equals Math and our Hands-On Math. And with these targeted intervention groups, we're hoping to see some growth. We've also begun an NKU mentoring program where students from NKU have come and been connected with students who are at risk, and we're also hoping that will help our students succeed. In the growth, the growth category, we hope to increase the percent of students making typical annual growth from sixty-seven percent to seventy percent. We again met with each student, each sophomore, with their plan results, and again discussed with them individually, this is how you, this is how you scored from the scores, this is how you can improve. And we've also, this year, we've had our departments giving the practice ACTs, and we're hoping that, I'm sorry, from these practice ACTs, when they give them, and the teachers can go back and work with the students on the specific problems that they've missed. And we also are going to be going, looking into the item analysis from the plan results more specifically and work with teachers on, here's the trends. Here are the trends of what students were missing, and here's some things that we need to improve on in the classroom so that they can get better instruction. The next one, the college and career readiness, we hope to increase our overall score from forty-nine to sixty-two. We plan to continue having the students attend college and career readiness classes, and at the end of those classes, they will take the ASVAB and Coyote tests. We plan to continue with that. We are also restructuring our pathways. We've met with our, all of our departments, and we've asked all of our departments to take a very serious look at all the courses that they are offering and make sure that they have a merit and will help us support students in these pathways. And we are also looking for ways to increase industry certificates that we can offer students. At a regional principals meeting, I asked other principals, and it seemed to be something that other principals are having trouble with as well. We are looking into it and what certifications we can. With our graduation rates, we are hoping to increase our rate from eighty-three percent to eighty-five percent. We'll continue with the district meetings where we talk about students who are at risk, and our cabinet meeting within the school, which is the administrators and the counselors. We meet every two weeks, and we look at the persistence to graduate data, and we talk about students who are at risk and coming up with plans for them. And we also, anytime a student who is looking to drop out, meets with me, and I talk with them as well before signing the papers. So based on the analysis of the school report card, the new strategies that we know we need to do are increasing the number of students who are career-ready, because right now, we're not satisfied with one student being career-ready. We are going to reevaluate all the elective courses, and the departments are doing that now. And we're also looking to increase the industry certifications, and we're looking into researching how we can incorporate more of those certificates. We're also looking to increase the number of students who attain benchmark on the ACT, and we're reevaluating the requirements for instructional hours in our core classes right now. Our site base is working on that, researching different schedules that may be beneficial to us, and also create more intervention classes for students who did not attain benchmark. The last one is to increase our math scores for students with special needs from three point seven to thirteen. We are looking to create additional math support classes for these students. The classes that we have in place have shown a lot of growth for these students, but we're looking to add additional classes for more students. Right now, we just have one, and we're looking to maybe add some more.
And it's not been very much time, so you may not really have a feeling for this at all. The academies, I know you have partial academy at Dixie, you know, where you're moving around. Do you think that'll help career readiness? Is that working well? Do you, that all meshes together?
Yes, I do think it'll, it'll help certainly our building, but also with the district, but our students who are in the career, in the academies, those will be the career paths, and I do think that will help us, absolutely.
This is the first year for springboard.
This is our second year.
It's our second year now.
Yeah, last year was the first, yes. And we actually trained Jerry and Jenny and Missy last year, went to national training and became nationally certified springboard trainers. This summer, we conducted our own training again, kind of fine-tuned it, worked where the teachers were struggling, and I'm sending Jerry, Jenny, and Missy back in January. They've been invited to become advanced springboard trainers. So we're really doing all our own work, and in the high schools, we're actually walking with department chairs and the principals, looking at the springboard strategies in the classroom.
I know this was a big change for teachers, they had to go to that curriculum.
Yes.
Really, thank you. You did excellent. Glad to see you. Looking forward to your good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.